All right, it is 3:30, no it's not, it's 5:30, Tuesday, the date change messed me all up. February 21st, Tuesday, the regular city council meeting for the City of International Falls, I will call to order, our first item is to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First item would be calling it to order and doing a roll call, all the members of the city council are present. The next item is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions to the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull E under number six off the agenda at this time. Consider response of Cooching County in regards to lease agreement for shared space for all International Falls Police Department. I had some conversations with some commissioners and they'd like to get together and meet with the council first before we do this.
And with that being said, I did have some conversation along with Administrator Burkstrom with Commissioner Roach on Friday. I also had a voicemail from Commissioner Shoblam and it is the county's intention to want to have some additional dialogue and discussion with them. It's my position though at this time to leave it on the agenda and the reason I think we need to leave it on to the agenda is we have to give them a formal response of the city council by tomorrow on what we're going to be doing with that space. I just want to make sure that I'm correct that tomorrow is the date, City Administrator, is that accurate?
That is correct, Mayor. They requested a response from that letter on by tomorrow.
Okay. Any other discussion on pulling the item from the agenda? Do you want to make a motion to pull it from the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pull it from the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to pull it from the agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner to pull it from the agenda, discussion on pulling it from the agenda. All right, we will call the question on pulling it from the agenda.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
No.
And I'll vote no. We will leave it on the agenda, so now we have the original motion for the agenda with no additions or deletions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. So we'll continue with the agenda as written. We'll go to the approval of the minutes, we have the minutes of February 6th, regular city council meeting, chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll move.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler, discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to the committee of the whole minutes of February 13th, chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Councilor Wagner.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller, discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we go to the minutes of our special committee of the whole meeting regarding recreation. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
No second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we have our accounts payable, our resolution for approving transfers, payments, and claims, accounts payable. Moving from the 401 permanent improvement fund is $66,666.66, that's coming evenly, it's on the second page, it got flipped in the printing. That's coming from the 601 water and the 603 sewer equally in $33,333.33. Going to the 403 for capital outlay is $20,567.67 and that's coming from the 601 water, $14,693. And from the 603 sewer, $5,874.25 for total transfers of $85,233.91. Accounts payable and claims, City of International Falls claims, $1,031,809.57. Airport commission claims of $9,339.94. And International Falls Library Board claims of $6,363.93 for a total of $1,047,513.44. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden, discussion?
Yes, please. Total transfers, 87,95.
Oh, voice record. Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we'll go to audience, is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything to the attention of the council? All right, there will also be an opportunity later in the meeting. First item under new business tonight is Cooching Technology Initiative Discussion on the broadband project for Highway 332, County Road 155. Jackie Nagel and Jim Yount.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilors. So this is part of an ongoing effort coordinated through the Cooching Technology Initiative with a lot of other stakeholders to modernize our county and cities and provide high-speed broadband access throughout. And this particular proposal is for the section of 155 and 332 and it's a total project of $192,000, something on that order of magnitude with Midco contributing $57,000 and the rest of the funds being provided with a state border-to-border broadband grant and we are we have the county has committed to providing $28,000 which is 15% of the total project costs and we are asking that the city provide $15,000 and change as well. This will have a number of advantages, there's a number of properties there that are not currently served with broadband. This will also complete a fiber optic loop from Midco for their services such that if their fiber backbone right now gets cut at any one point, service will continue without that complete loop. One section of that, what would otherwise be a loop would be cut off until they were able to repair the damage. In addition to that, it's likely to accelerate the timeline for them being able to provide broadband to the currently undeveloped properties on the east side of the city where there's currently no residential or other development and a number of businesses that are on the city limit side of it as well as others, of course, on the county side. Those include the Keep Properties address on County Road 155, they have that there but there's currently they're relying on cellular data, they do not have broadband at that access.
Or Midco, or Nanco.
No, he misspoke, on the west side of County Road 155.
Yes, sorry.
The properties own their terminal site, they rely on cellular data right there.
Okay.
Yep.
They also underwent the cost to install extension line into their primary site because there was no broadband available to them there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That actually clears up a question I had from earlier today when Jim and I were talking, so thank you.
Right, right. In addition, there's an L&amp;L Constructors' site where they bought that with the intention to develop that property but decided not to at this time because they don't have broadband access. They would like to proceed, there are also several parcels owned by Wagner Construction which will become buildable in about 15 years with, well, 15 years out is, you know, a decent amount of time, but nonetheless, they're unlikely to happen for development without the broadband access there. And those are some of the major bullet points. We did, Jackie came up with a number of different proposals for how to fund this, in all of them, most of them we are pursuing only 40% of funding from the border-to-border broadband grant. The maximum is 50% that we can ask, but the odds of being approved go up a lot if you ask for significantly less than the full 50%. The odds of getting any money from them are higher at the 40% level, so that's part of the whole strategy of this. And so what we are asking is a resolution confirming the city will participate in the project, a commitment to provide $28,987 towards the project, that's the 15% mark, which will be contingent upon getting the border-to-border broadband grant as well, and then a letter of support from the International Falls EDA. Jackie, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's it.
And this said that we were going to be speaking to Jackie, not you.
You mentioned me as well, so anyway.
So I have a couple of questions. So would this service loop be coming from south to north or north-south? From the top of, from, the question I have is, we have a fiber at the Voyagers National Park headquarter building and then the, any project that would be moved for the city immediately, which would be the One Cymas which is right across the street, we would be able to extend that for what we understand cheaper than going in, but I think that that's a conversation I would love to have outside of a public meeting.
I'm fairly certain that the service at the visitor's center is not a Midco service.
Okay.
It's provided by the Northeast Service Co-op which is government only, so you will not be able to, and if I'm correct, I could be wrong.
And that's why I think that this is a fact-finding thing that we need to do and get deeper into it because I don't want to have any misinformation as we move forward.
There's definitely fiber running through that corridor where we're planning this project, but it is for government use only.
Has anyone from KTI contacted One Cymas and to see what they needed for their future build there? That's in the multimodal, I reached out to Felix today, I haven't heard anything back, but that's the project that we have that's going in there. And then the other property that we have would be in the city right now would be Keeps Property?
Correct.
Okay.
And L&amp;L Constructors as well.
Okay.
And then those two Wagner parcels, there's other parcels in there, the one the county just purchased from Friends.
Right.
That would go, when they build, that'll go on the Northeast Service Co-op fiber because it's government.
Okay. So have any of the people that would be potential going, getting the service kicked in, anything for the?
Financially?
Financially?
No, but we do have four letters of support from Wagner Construction, from Keep Properties, from Nanco Trucking, and from KETA, all supporting the project. I've put out feelers to all the businesses, those are the four that have responded so far.
Okay. And when do you need to know by, on what level of support the city would be involved in?
The filing deadline for the grant?
Yes.
Is March 1st. I'm going to be in San Antonio all of next week, so it would be advantageous to be able to file that, submit the grant application prior to that, I can certainly do it while I'm out of town.
Okay.
But I need to know sooner than later.
All right, any council questions?
I would move that we support the project with the financials that they're asking for support.
The 40%, or the 20%?
15% is the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because whether there's businesses or people there now, one good thing to have is fiber there, right? If someone wants to develop, so, the EDA coming from.
And I think that's a good point that Councilor Holden's pointing, the money's going to be coming out of our EDA fund?
That's what I was thinking earlier today.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilor Kayler to go at the 15% and a letter of support?
A second.
Yes. We have a second from Councilor Buller. Any further discussion?
Question, is it coming from the south and up, you're saying?
It's coming just north of the Van Lynn Road.
Okay.
That's where the service stops right now, so just start just north of Van Lynn Road and continue north up 332, up 155 to Highway 11.
Thank you.
For further clarification, this would provide a complete fiber optic loop, so effectively it's coming from both directions.
Yeah, I understand.
Any one point.
Okay.
I'll add this.
And I guess, though, how much is Midco, if we're, so they're kicking in the other 30%?
30, yep.
Okay. Excellent. All right, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was expecting a fight.
No, it's just a question.
All that carried, all that paper here?
There were copies of the letters of support, he wanted to see them.
No, I just want to get as much information as possible.
I'd like to thank Jackie for doing all the legwork to settle this topic.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question, when would we know if we get the grant or not?
That was a good question, I think June, considering, I was worried about the deadline. I think they explore them right away and I think we get them outside of June.
Okay.
So ideally the project would happen still in June.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
So in that event, if you don't get the grant for the $70,000, then what happens?
Then we'll go back to the drawing board and start over.
Okay.
And I would be back again.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, next we have a letter of support for the ATV friendly RV park on a parcel of donated land, just writing a letter of support for the City of Little Fork, chair would entertain a motion to move forward, a letter of support.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we have two hires coming out of Human Resources. The first one would be to hire a deputy city administrator. The recommendation is to hire Lisa Riggs with a starting date of February 27th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that hiring.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
We had a number of qualified applicants, it was myself, Chief Koschek, and Sheri Stenzl, Human Resource Director, who interviewed six candidates, one had backed out at the end of the process before the interviews began, so we actually interviewed five, they were all very qualified. For all of us, it was the majority that Lisa came out on top, so Lisa does great work and excited to work with her through this next step in her career path.
So we have a motion and a second right now, let's just pretend that this passes?
Yes.
What is the process moving forward on filling her position?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, that would be my next, that was going to be my next thing is then I would ask the request to fill her position, that would involve a five-day posting period as per the union contract, and then after that, depending on if it's signed or not, and then if something else opened up, you know, go on down that line. Otherwise, if nobody signs or is qualified, then we would open it up to fill it and advertise outside to fill the vacant administrative support specialist.
So will, after this, are we going to have to make more, or have a vote for that process, or is that internally handled?
I would appreciate if you just add on to it to move forward with replacing her position, process to replace her, the current office administration support specialist position.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Holden and a second by Councilor Kayler, do we have a friendly amendment to fill position after?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Is she going to take it?
Did she, did you offer it to her?
Yeah, yeah, where are we at here?
This is awkward, we know, we know the answer.
You could say yes, so.
Okay. She's not just finding out right now, right? All right, I'm actually very excited for a handful of reasons, so number one, you've been amazing and we didn't even really even know each other when we first started, we knew each other a little bit, but you are so professional and so wonderful at what you do and I'm very excited to see where we go as a department with you in Betty's old spot because we've seen she's done really good stuff. So it's going to be an exciting change for the city, so thank you. We have a motion and a second, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Now we have a recommendation from, to hire a maintenance worker and that is coming out of HR as well, and that is being offered to John McLean with a hire date of March 13th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that hire.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion. We don't even have anyone here from Public Works to brag him up, but I will say that I've worked with John at the VFW, he's a very good, hard-working person, I think he'll fit in very well with the crew down there at Public Works, so.
Not the John McLean from Die Hard here?
No, different guy. Die Hard's a Christmas movie. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next we get into some really fun stuff, approve the contract ordinance for the lift station number 15, improvements project. Come on up. Chair, Jason Fisher, City Engineer.
You shouldn't have to just say City Engineer. Missed my shot. Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay. Yes, this is a part of our lift station rehabilitation program, this is the second one that we're bringing before you, we're recommending the award of the contract to the low bidder of TNT Construction of Ren Rapids, so.
Yep.
All right, we have a, we have a contract ordinance that has been issued, we have a low bidder, chair would entertain a motion to approve the low bid, or any bid, okay, low bid, and that was Councilor Buller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden, and that bid came in substantially lower than engineer's estimate too, correct?
It did, yes.
All right.
Is there a reason why then it's substantially lower than, I mean, it's almost?
Half.
Half of these other ones.
No, we didn't have a specific reason why, I mean, the contractor, the other bids were right around engineer's estimate, so it just, they were lower. We did check with them, make sure that they were willing to honor that bid and they were, so. Well, and when I saw the bid, I had contacted the Public Works Director and I just asked him, I said, because I don't know the company, and I said, is this a reputable company? Because we've ran into that issue before where we've had a low bid and it was a company that really couldn't, can do the work that they had bid for, and he says it's a reputable company and they meet all of the requirements, so windfall for us, I guess.
I think we should call them no, just to make sure.
The company or Ted on vacation?
Ted on vacation, yeah.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second to take the low bid in the contract ordinance, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jason. All right, Committee of the Whole recommendations, first one is approve purchasing Cyber6 product for enhancing cybersecurity hardware from AdSec, chair would entertain a motion to approve that purchase.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. All right, I know, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse on this one and I am really sorry, I am going to vote against this, but I also have reached out to the League of Minnesota Cities today and I spoke with Christian Torgelson, he deals with cybersecurity for the League of Minnesota Cities and we had a fantastic conversation and he did inform me that the concerns that I have are legitimately valid. My concern isn't that this company isn't going to do a great job or anything like that, my concern on hiring, on getting this piece of equipment is it doesn't necessarily fix any problems that we're having with cybersecurity in the, or in our network. He sent me an email and by weird coincidence, I see he's online tonight, which I appreciate quite a bit as well, but the crux of the conversation that we had is we haven't done any of the stuff that we need to do leading up to finding out what our cybersecurity needs are. We can plug this server or this piece of equipment into our network and it can watch and monitor and make sure that everything is fine, however, we haven't done any of the basis to find out, if we lost all of the access to permits, it's probably not a big deal. If we lost access to bill all of our water people, that's going to be a big problem. This system that we're looking at only sees that we're having a problem or people are able to get into our network, but it doesn't actually secure anything more so than just knowing that somebody got in. The suggestion that we had was to do a business impact analysis and study what services we're offering and the technology systems and support those services and come up with priorities on what is the most important data that we have to save and really start going through it. I don't have a concern so much with how much money we're spending on this product, I'm just worried that with all the products that are out there, if this is $6,000 and that's going to save us, I just don't see it. I, I see you're online, Christian, would you be willing to just come online and just kind of give your brief analysis of my thoughts because I don't know if I do so well at it?
Hello, Mayor, members of the International Falls City Council, I appreciate you having me onboard, I thought I would join your meeting by Zoom just on the off chance you did have any questions and it appears that you do. So earlier today, Mayor Droba called me to ask me some basic questions about cybersecurity strategy for the City of International Falls, and one of the conclusions that we discussed or came to was you can spend a lot of money on cybersecurity and you may never achieve perfect security, and the reality is, is there's a lot of fear, uncertainty, and doubt in the cybersecurity industry, and my concern is that cities are susceptible to purchasing products thinking, hey, this is a silver bullet that's going to solve my solution. Now, I haven't had time to look into the specific product that's offered by AdSec, but I can say that there are probably more fundamental exercises that you should probably attend to first before you go down the path of purchasing products which may or may not be necessary. My first recommendation is to conduct an analysis of the services you offer and the systems that support those services. Second, I would inventory your data to understand what you have, where it's stored, who has access to it, and how long you need to keep it for. And third, I would inventory your hardware and software systems. It appears this tool may do, may help you with some of those things, but I can't speak to the full functionality in services that are offered as part of the Cyber6 tool. Long story short, I think cybersecurity is a complex topic and it requires a fair degree of due diligence and effort to spend on determining what's right for your city. I would say that purchasing a single product is not going to achieve the results you're looking for, however, I'm happy to spend my time to do an analysis with you and your staff to discuss the rationale, your needs, and what would work best for you, and if the outcome of that is, hey, go along and purchase this product, that's great, I'm vendor-agnostic and happy to recommend products that you truly need.
Appreciate that. So I just wanted to, again, if the council moves forward with this, I have no issue with it, I am going to vote no on it because I just don't feel comfortable. I am going to vote no on it because I just don't feel comfortable. However, I, I understand that we need to do something and if for whatever reason we do purchase this product, I also feel compelled that we need to start looking at this business impact analysis to find out what we have and so that we are moving down a road of making educated decisions based off of what our needs are. So if there's no other discussion, and, and Scott, do you want to please come forward?
Come up.
Did you have a question for?
I was just wondering, how much of this have, have you done already? What he was talking about as far as locating where the main, main thing should be, where we should be concentrating on?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't done a, a formal analysis, but I have, you know, developed some plans for business continuity and backing up our data. The essential data is backed up in at least two different ways so that in the event of data loss or ransomware, we do have, you know, some security that our data is safe, you know? So again, I, you know, I have, in, in the last memo, I think I addressed some of those questions, but I mean, it was my, my analysis, you know, not done by an outside vendor that led me to recommend this product as a way to get more visibility into our network and not just for cybersecurity, but to see, let me see performance problems, to see what, you know, if I change the network, you know, where some issues may be. So again, it's, you know, it's, it's a tool that I think would be beneficial. Of course, if we spent money for have an outside vendor doing a complete analysis, that would be obviously, you know, a good thing to do. Obviously, depending on the, on the cost. I've had, you know, I do have outside vendors try to get us to hire them to do analyses and, you know, for varying costs and it can be exorbitant or reasonable. But again, this was just a tool that I was confident would improve the ability to keep out attackers and also do other network troubleshooting.
And again, if we choose to purchase the product, again, my issue isn't necessarily with the, the $3,000 on the product. I'm just worried that we're buying a product that doesn't necessarily get us much better except for we can see that there's someone had came in or whatever. I just want to make sure that we have a game plan moving forward and not just poking at holes to try to fix problems.
Right, right. I mean, as far as business continuity, you know, like I have a packet and I shouldn't reveal too much of this, but you know, there are, you know, many things I've done to ensure business continuity, including backups and how kind of a manual, like if I'm gone or I get hit by a bus, you know, people can open this and get stuff up and running pretty quickly.
I know I'm all for it. I'd like to see more security that we have additional. If down the road an analysis is done, that's fine, but right now I think we need to up our game on security. So that's my vote, so.
Did Christian say that he'd be interested in helping?
Yeah, he did, he did say that he would be willing to.
That's what I thought I heard, yeah.
Yep.
And that'd be through the League of Minnesota Cities?
Yep.
So what have we got to lose?
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
No. No.
And I'm going to vote no as well. Motion fails on a three-two vote. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselor.
I would, I would say, Todd, if you could get a hold of Christian and get working with him on some of that.
And Christian said that we're, we're all willing to sit down and have a conversation and, and move forward with the analysis.
Said he's got contact you too, didn't he?
Yep. All right, thank you.
I'll, I'll send an email to City Administrator Bergstrom and your IT Director to connect and get contacted on this project moving forward.
Greatly appreciated, thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
All right. Approve proposed International Voyager snowmobile club trail reroute within the city limits, which includes abandoning a previous route. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. And we've already had this conversation in, in committee, two committees actually. This is just a reroute which would be running to, actually, why don't you come on up and just explain it? We have Joe Marshawn from the Snowmobile Club, International Voyager Snowmobile Club, please.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so we were contacted by the Cobblestone Hotel about a, right about when they finished construction, about is there a way to get snowmobile traffic from that property? And of course, that includes the existing hotels and restaurants in that little business district to the main trail. We looked at a number of solutions and our trail administrator came up with a simple reroute. About a dozen years ago, law enforcement gave us permission to maintain, I guess it would be the right of way adjacent to 20th Street, which we were doing from the main trail effectively to Fourth Avenue and then south to the Chevy Store. And it, basically they were on their own from that dead end back there. The trouble now contemporarily speaking is apparently there have been a number of electrical transformers installed on that route along 20th Street, which makes it virtually impossible to get grooming equipment on that right of way. So in essence, we've abandoned that route. There are no more signs there on the 20th Street portion of the route. There are still signs on the Fourth Avenue. So the solution that we're asking the city to work with us on is begin maintaining a trail that is already used by locals effectively Fifth Avenue from our groomer compound on 15th Street and Fifth Avenue, south to the Army Reserve Building, then east along 19th Avenue to Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, pardon me, I may have had that backwards, Fifth to 19th to Fourth, along the property line of Ekman Chevy. We have met with them, they will grant a trail permit for us to use their property and then that, that traffic will then come out on Crescent Avenue where snowmobiles can cross Highway 53 and then make their way south into that business district.
So if, if I'm correct then, that opens up the door, which would be in front of the chocolate mousse, the hotels, obviously Cobblestone on the other side. The one conversation that we did have in committee both times is that Batuminus Trail that we have there, we want to make sure that we don't have snowmobiles on there. And I think part of the conversation was we would be signing that and you have said that you have no intention of grooming that. So it works out really well for both entities.
Yes, for sure. So the, the wayfinding sides along that frontage road would be on the west side of the frontage road, which would encourage the, the snowmobiles to use that side of the road. And in thinking about this, particularly after our last meeting where that was brought up, either of us, the club or the city, could put snow fence up and signs, making certain snowmobiles know that they're not supposed to use that trail. The hotels would cooperate with that as well, for sure.
Excellent. Any other questions or concerns regarding this? And we have spoke with the police, we spoke with Public Works and everyone seems to be on board that this makes the most sense, both for the city, the snowmobiles and obviously the businesses that are affected in that district. So I would say at this point, we have a motion and a second, there's no other discussion, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Fabulous, thank you, everybody. I will head to the board meeting right now and give them the good news. We'll start on that trail this week.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, next we have a resolution approving a loan application for the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for a loan from the drinking water, or drinking revolving fund for improvements to the water treatment plant. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that loan application.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the 2023 sump pump inspection project as presented by Bolton and Mink for a citywide sump pump inspection program. Jason, you want to come up and give us how we got to this point?
We've done in the last couple of years, a couple of smaller areas of town sump pump inspections and we had enough failures and enough unknowns amongst them that we feel as a way to attack eye and eye, that this would be one of our best tools. So we're recommending that we do a citywide sump pump inspection, not, we, the Bolton and Mink wouldn't be doing the inspection, but we'd be hiring a plumber, a licensed plumber to come in and, and do those inspections. So we'd be doing it over the next couple of years, so, for the entire city, except minus the ones that we've already done unless they're being re-inspected.
I'd like to talk again about, you know, if, if the contractors aren't there to do this work, that there's no penalty to people, the elderly people especially in International Falls. In other words, I don't, I don't want to see like, get it done in 60 days or whatever. That's, I mean, people are really talking about this, so, and I think that we got to watch the penalty end of it because there ain't many plumbers around here, just to be honest with you. The trades are down, so.
Okay.
But that, I'm sorry, but I think that's up to us anyhow. What? That would be up to us anyhow, the, the penalty and the time that they'd have, yeah. Yeah. And I think we, well, when we get to that point, we'll all be a menial bold tub because we want people to get it fixed, not lock their door and not let us in, right? I want, I want it to be reasonable and, you know, so.
Please, Jason, one of the first steps would be sitting down with city staff and kind of figuring out the scope of this project and figuring out how to best serve the community would be part of that, figuring out that scope, so.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, Chair would entertain a motion to move that project forward.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Taylor.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
I'm, I'm getting ahead of this game, mine's going in next week.
You know, with the sump pumps, I've, I've been explained what it is so many times and the Public Works Director has sent me, I believe, a Bolton and Mink video on how to know if you, if you're correct. And I'm looking at pipes in my house and I'm looking at the stuff on my floor and I'm like, I, I'm, I don't think I'm right, but I don't know, so I'm just going to go with I'm right. So I would love for you guys to come in and inspect it and then that, that starts the process of like, like Councilor Holden had said, trying to get it fixed. I mean, I, I think I, I want it to be right. I just, all of our houses are the way they are. All right, next, consider a response letter to Cooching County in regards to the lease for shared space for the International Falls Police Department. I think that this is going to need more background information than just voting on a letter. So I'm going to try to concise and please, City Administrator, if I miss something or I misspeak, please correct me immediately because I don't want it to be wrong. As the county has been going through the process of looking for a new jail, the conversation came a while back, it was myself and Counselor Joe Kraus were invited to a county committee meeting of myself, Sheriff Headland, Commissioner Pavlik, Commissioner Scoy and Commissioner Murray. The conversation was, you know, very much in its infancy. We're looking at building a new jail, new law enforcement center. We would like to know if the city is interested in, in being a partner in that. At that initial conversation and, or the city administrator also was at that meeting as well, the conversation was if we wanted to partner in the building of the property originally, if we wanted to put capital assets into that building. We kind of did a little bit of research at that time. We did get back to them that we would be struggling to go in financially in building a new facility with the county, but we would be more apt to continue a renting relationship with the county. At that point, we had asked for additional information on size, scope, building, timeline and some substantial time had passed in, in that we hadn't heard anything back. The, the county has been working towards this new law enforcement center jail sheriff's department. It wasn't until middle of last summer where the conversation started coming on, are you looking at continuing leasing with us? And at that time, we, we asked for numbers. How much is it going to be to lease? I will be the first to say, it's my personal opinion that we have not paid enough to the law enforcement center and to the county over the years. We, we have had a great relationship with the sheriff's office, we've had a great relationship with the law enforcement center, the jail. The conversations through the summer came down to, I believe their engineer, Kent Corbats?
I think he's more of a project manager, but I'm not certain of his type.
Their project manager had talked to us about if we were interested in, in leasing and we continued asking legitimately the same question, how much space and how much is it going to be? We never actually got the answer to that question. At, on December 30th, 2022, I received a letter from the county board, which I believe is in your packet. I don't know where it's from, it was in the Committee of the Whole meeting last week. I apologize for that. Asking if we wanted to sign for a long-term lease or if we wanted to continue the lease as we have. The, the dollar amount has not been set in stone, although I believe it's 102,000 is what the county was looking at raising the rent to, which I think is a fair amount of With that information, we sat down with the, the police chief, myself, the city administrator and the police chief, and we had some frank discussions on what is going to be best for our police department moving forward. Wasn't an easy conversation, it lasted well over an hour, hour and a half to having, what, what options do we have? And the conversation moved into the city RFP slash RFQ for buildings and facilities because we know we're, we're missing space for our fire, our ambulance and Public Works. That is a consistent issue that we have is the space of those entities in our community. That RFQ is going to be a while. We don't know if it's going to be a year, six months or two years, but that just tells us what spaces we have available. It also tells us what spaces we have that could be remodeled. It also tells us what land we have that could be built for police, fire, ambulance, Public Works. But until we get that information, we really just don't know, don't know where we're going. Makes it very difficult to sign a long-term lease with the county, not knowing what the city is going to be able to do in the next five, six years. That brought up a tough question. What do we do now? So we'd asked the police So we'd asked the police chief to give us his recommendation if we should stay with the law enforcement center long-term, or if he believed it would be in the best interest of his department for us to move forward in a different space. And he believes, as I do, as the city administrator does, and as the committee of the whole did last week, it is in the best interest for the police department to move from the law enforcement center to a new facility. So we had that discussion at, the three of us, myself, the city administrator and the police chief. We brought in a larger group to have that conversation. We brought in the public works director, the fire chief, the police chief, myself, the city administrator, and we had a bigger discussion on facilities. We're in dire need. We sent out a RFQ. The council had approved that a while back. We finally got it worded correctly and we have that out, and we're waiting to hear back from qualified people to help us. Then we brought it to the first official committee meeting to make a decision, which was land use and legislation. We had some very good conversation at land use and legislation. That is the first time that BACIS has came up as a potential for us to be able to utilize their space in a temporary capacity. One of the big concerns I have, and Counselor Wegner had at the time, is safety, accessibility from our community, parking. How do you dispatch from the third floor of BACIS? What are you going to do about the jail? All of those questions are good questions, and you know what? We've thought of dang near every question. There are some that may be lingering, but this is a new process, so we have to look at it as there's going to be things that we might have missed, but we're going to have to look and move forward with. So it passed land use and legislation. We ended up bringing the conversation to the committee of the whole last week. The minutes are in the packet from that meeting, so a lot of the questions that were asked at land use and legislation were reiterated at that meeting. And I think depending on how this goes, there's going to be a lot of conversation and questions and concerns in the community. I'm with them. I understand that. But those are questions and concerns that I'm feeling more and more comfortable with as I'm speaking to our police chief, as I'm seeing our officers in this room in support of the decision that we're making. It doesn't change that it's tough. On Friday, as I said at the beginning of this meeting, I did have a very good conversation with the city administrator and our, coincidentally, my county commissioner Ricky Roach, we had a really good conversation. There was information that he did not know that the city had not received. There was conversation that he did not understand how we came to the decision that we had. The more information we seemed to give him, the more he understood our decision, although he still disagreed with our decision, and I'm fine with that. I also had spoke with the sheriff, which again, the sheriff has said that he supports the city of International Falls Police Department with any decision that we make in this. His big concern is to make sure that if there is a facility, that it is a joint-use facility, whether it is police, fire, and ambulance, police, fire, but utilizing a joint facility for shared space for emergency services. But again, I do think that he would like to see the law enforcement center stay there. It has been a great relationship. None of this is any negativity on the sheriff, the county, the law enforcement center, or any of the people working there. It is a decision on identity. The police department is mentally being combined with the sheriff's department because we're in the same building. It's important to the police chief and myself, and I believe members of this council, for the police to have their own independent identity from the county. I also have had a conversation with the chairman of the county board, Commissioner Shoblam. I know that what's going to come out of this today is there is going to be good conversation between the city and the county. That is what I've heard through Commissioner Shoblam. It's also what I heard from Commissioner Roach. They'd like to have quarterly or sooner meetings with the city council to discuss projects as they move forward so that we can be on the same page as we move forward with stuff. However, today, any way you look at it, we have to come up with a decision for the county. If we make the decision today that we're going to break our lease, we send a letter to the county, and that just means that that can be the start of the conversation. Doesn't mean that it's over, but my concern is the same exact concern that was brought to me when we all met the department heads. If we don't go to BACIS now, there is no guarantee in two years that that facility will be available. There's not a lot of things that we have to do to change that, and it meets short-term needs for the city, and this is not a forever fix for our police department. They are a great group of men and women that deserve their own space, and by their own space, I mean an emergency services center or whatever that looks like. We can't do, in my opinion, this is my opinion, we can't do a short-term lease with the county while we try to figure out what we're going to do as a city because they're still going to do what they have to do, and we may not have a place to move to in two years or three years, whatever that looks like. That's the background. I know there's going to be some rousing conversation, both at the discussion level here tonight and in our community, but this is not a conversation that has been taken lightly from staff. So with that being said, I'm going to, before we even put it to a motion, I'm going to open up for a conversation from the council.
Well, I think the council knows how I feel. I've been with the city of International Falls for a long time, and I saw that when they had to move from the old place over to the law enforcement center, they lost their identity. And yeah, they've had a good relationship with deputies and sheriff and stuff, but I think it should be their own identity. It really should. And so that's what I'm pushing for. I want to see that happen, so. And I think it's time. I mean, how many years have gone by that they haven't had their own identity? It's been a long time, 30, 40 years. So I think we need to move in that direction.
I, it will be shorter and less animated than last time. Well, maybe not shorter. Well, as far as loss of identity, I think everybody in town knows the difference between the police department and the sheriff's department. They share a building. It's no different than any other places in town that do that. But I understand the uncomfortableness with it, and there are, I see there's, I'm assuming they're here in support of the move, the gentleman here that are with them, which is fine, but I also have heard from others that are not in some part of the move for whatever various reasons. And last week, I said I would vote for it, but y'all know I wasn't, I really wasn't for it. I wanted to do it to get over this whole thing. We don't have our own place. It's been a, there's a term for it in a sandbox that I won't use here, that's been going on since the minute, the minute they moved over there. And I also know the sheriffs have tried over the years, and that was the stress on one in particular that it put on them, trying to make the city of International Falls happy. And that's when I saw it from, but it's, that's how I'm looking at it from. So it isn't like there were any attempts to make them feel welcome. Sometimes I think feeling welcome not is perceived. I don't know if that's necessarily the case, or people not knowing that people are there. And I went and I talked to Mike on Friday. He called me in, we had a good conversation. I don't know, we talked a lot more about the job and stuff in general than after we talked about this about 10 minutes. I do not believe it's better for public safety and customer service in International Falls. I don't think you're going to get the same type of collaboration in different places. You can't say you will, but one of the former chiefs of police is one of my best friends. He's moved. Well, I can't tell you, I don't talk to him as much as I used to, being in the same place. And that's not just friends and stuff. That's exchanging information, important information. And also I told Mike that I hope he's willing to be in BACIS a long time, because if you're thinking two years, three years, you're right, we might not even have our RFP and all that done in two years. Then how long before we build a public safety complex? I mean, if you're willing to be in, because once you move, you move, you know? And I told him that is one of my biggest concerns. And I have nothing against BACIS. Like I said before, where they're moving into is the next little space, the old Northland Counseling, because I've used it personally and professionally, and that, you know, if it maybe wasn't on the third floor, I'd think better of it. And what about, there's going to be times when they're, not everybody goes to get questioned peacefully, getting drugged through in the middle of the day. There is also daycare's there at BACIS. Is everybody going to be comfortable with that, who goes in and out for different reasons? I know everybody wants their identity, and I can also agree with it, that's important. But we got to, everybody would like to have a new building and new space. I'm not saying it's not needed, but I don't, I come up here, Ted does a lot of good work and Billy on the grounds here, I didn't see a money tree. You know, I don't, I don't know where it is. We just, we, we're going to apply for a loan or grant for our water plant that's going to need new refurbishing, so where are we at? Do we want clean water or do we want more buildings? Which, and the cost of the project for the water is eight to 12 million dollars if we go ahead with that after all this other stuff that this grant is for. I mean, that's another big concern, and I'm afraid part of that is, who's going to take the smoke? Who's going to, me and Mike talked about that. Also, one of my worries from him, he's going to be getting a lot of smoke about this. And if we go ahead and do this, we got to make sure other people know it's not just him. It's the public works director thinks he needs new buildings, and the fire chief needs new buildings. And we also got to remember, nothing's been said about the county. The county doesn't want to make a big new jail.
Correct.
They have to. They have to. And I get a lot about transparency here. We were worried about being transparent for the sewer district representation. The only reason Sheriff Headland knew that we're meeting in committee and it was on the docket is because I called him and told him Monday morning that we were meeting on the county lease. Where I think we're still renting from them, this is a decision that affects them, he should have been told by somebody other than me. Actually, I was a little taken aback. And as far as talking to the other commissioners, I think if we table this and wait, I don't think, what's going to happen if we don't tell them our decision today? They call me, well, I called Ricky after Jason called me. They just want to, doesn't mean, good chance you're not going to change anybody's mind. But I think we owe that to them, and the term transparency that I hear a lot about here is we should give them a chance, let them talk to us. I think they'll be okay if we don't respond to them tomorrow with this, especially after I talked to them. And I just think we got that time, and the public needs to know transparency too about what the long-term effects of this could be, which is the longer, bigger goal. But I think, and they're new. We got two new commissioners on there right now. We're going to have a third, or we're going to have, yeah, two more new ones. I mean, these are all new people. They might have totally different views of what's going on. And I don't think it's a mistake that we got the letter at the end of December that this came either, so.
I don't either.
And we, I mean, I think a little bit, the way we're raking Todd over the coals over, and we're taking, we'll take the chief's word for it that we should move, but not his for something that's a lot less. So I'm seeing a lot of confusion here, but I'm not saying right, wrong, or otherwise. Okay, but that's my thoughts on it all. I'd just like to table it and have that discussion that they requested and take it from there.
Okay. Thoughts over here?
Yeah, I would just like to thank Chief Koschek. I think he presented this very nice, good job, understandable. I just have some more questions than I've thought of that we.
Would you like the chief to come up?
Well, I don't, I don't know if he can answer these questions.
Okay, great.
We still have some issues. Pete might be able to answer them, actually. How much is it going to cost to house inmates? How much is it going to cost to dispatch? Where are these costs? I do not see them. I see a monthly cost.
We have that answers. The city attorney looked into those for us.
Okay. And what, is this agreeable? Is the county going to accept paying this or paying this price?
I can give you a quick rundown of comparable-sized cities who have made a similar change recently. And I forwarded some of the information to the city administrator and mayor. So I've been in a group of about 12 comparable-sized towns, cities going through the same thing we're going through, actually really similar, where we're looking for our identity, they're leaving a shared space with the county. And what I found is, when I asked them about dispatching specifically an inmate housing, and to a police chief, every one of them said that they already pay that through their county taxes. That being said, I do believe that would be a negotiating tool for you guys, obviously, but the precedent seems to be that these cities already pay through their county taxes for these services. And to tax them twice would place undue tax on the citizens of International Falls.
But do we know this for fact?
Yes, Chelsea's looked into it as well. And we've had those discussions, and I apologize, I would have forwarded everyone those emails. I did send them to the city administrator.
And in the email that we had received, we have Chelsea online too. Chelsea, would you like to take that question?
I would also, I'm sorry, I also add that the county attorney did state his opinion that once an inmate is booked into the county jail, they are their inmate, period. So once they go upstairs and they're taken into the county jail, that is their inmate, their responsibility.
City attorney, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I did look into this, and I don't, I should have anticipated this question, but I didn't. But I did find the appropriate statute on it. And basically, as Chief Koschek said, as soon as they become Coochin County jail inmates, they are the responsibility of Coochin County. They can charge, and this is kind of like down a rabbit hole, they can charge the inmates themselves, should they choose to, like a pay-to-stay type thing, but the city should not, and I wouldn't anticipate that they would incur any additional cost for having to jail or house inmates.
Thank you. Dispatch, same thing?
And like I said, the dispatching specifically was paid through county taxes. All the cities, and I'm not sure, I know Administrator Berksstrom, you received the spreadsheet, anywhere from populations of 4,000 to 7,000, this group of inmates, a very comparable to us, down to the amount of employees in the department. Making the shift to their own space did not assume any additional cost for dispatching or housing inmates.
Other than the lease rent or whatever.
Right, right. Right, right. And it was strictly a physical space rent-type situation.
Right. Similar to this. Great. Okay, what about, will you need to add additional people?
I don't, you know, and Pete and I had to talk about this, in the short term, I don't believe so. We have a part-time administrative assistant who currently works three days a week. We could supplement that with additional part-time help if needed. I don't anticipate a need in the near future. I mean, if we got our own space, our permanent location, I would anticipate we may need a full-time administrative assistant at that point. But in the short term, I don't foresee that, and I wouldn't be asking for that.
Okay. But just, I was just thinking, if you had somebody at the front during the day, then when, if we come to see you, somebody's got to be.
And there is an anti-com system there, I believe, and, and also, you know, again, we have to look into this, but we'd get set up with a phone tree with the city, I'm assuming, and they'd be able to call us and set up meetings, and we, something as simple as a bell, maybe, just to ring the bell to come and answer the door.
Sure, okay. I guess the only other question I have is, similar to Pete's, is, the worry is, how long are we going to be there? Because our tax base is dwindling. To build a brand-new multimodal public safety, whatever you're talking about, I just don't see that happening. So, I mean, are you going to be stuck here for?
Well, and like I said at the committee of the whole meeting, my recommendation was not for a permanent basis.
Exactly, yeah.
This, this is a little over my head, as far as all the other stuff goes. And I was just telling our guys that at a certain point, I have to trust all of you. Like, I've told you what my recommendation is, I've told you that this space we can exist in, short-term, interim, until we get a current, you know, a permanent space. But again, I'm going to just rely on all of you telling me that this is the right time to make this move, right? So the short answer is, I, I kind of just gave you my recommendations last week, and I don't really know how much more input I can have on the rest of it, but.
And, and I, I agree with the move, as for your identity.
They're valid questions, yeah. They're valid questions, absolutely.
Holden said, but, you know, we, we're beholden to the taxpayers of the city, and we can't go and double the cost of this by doing this move, even if it still kind of hurts to stay there. That's my worry. Because we are, you know, we already raised the levy last year, you did.
Yep.
And we don't want to have to do that for this move. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that. That was my, my biggest worry on that. And then, if, this is probably for the council, but thank you for your, do we still have the opportunity of a lease in the new jail, and is that something you're interested in?
Again, my, if you're asking me my opinion.
Yes.
I believe the best course of action for the city would be to pursue a joint facility with fire ambulance. It's a growing trend among cities our size and larger. Public safety buildings are kind of becoming the norm. I, again, this is nothing to do with anything else beyond me just wanting to see our identity and our police department connect with the community more. And I, I think, granted, Pete and I had a really good conversation, we had very good points with it, but I think he and I see things the same way as far as, we both want the best for the police department. We might disagree about what that means.
Well, yes.
But I have no doubt that Pete and I, though, at the end of the day, we just want what's best for the police department. And I did appreciate you talking to me on Friday. But again, I do foresee that. My recommendation would be to partner with the fire ambulance. I think Adam is growing out of that space, whether he's forced out of it at some point, that could even be a concern, just given the codes, you know, and he could be facing something similar to what they're facing with the jail. I, I don't know all the specifics of that, but I think it would be smart then rather to say, well, let's just build a new fire department, to say, well, why don't we combine facilities and save costs that way?
Okay. And, and just to touch on, on that little piece that you had just hit, that's, that's how we got to the RFP or RFQ, is as we're putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars into our buildings to keep them up to current code, we are, we are getting up to current code every year, everything we're doing, but at the end of the day, we still have a 100-year-old building. And, and you don't have to come up, Chief, but when you had to redo the air for the ambulances in the fire, in the fire hall, roughly how much was that change?
Uh, we, we actually didn't do it because we didn't get funded for it, but an air handling system, I believe it was three years ago, was $105,000.
So $105,000 for the air system that we're by law supposed to have?
Yep.
So that, that's a change that we have to update. We had, and I, I can't pinpoint specifics of what Public Works had, but we had something to do with oil containment thing, which was just shy of, huh?
Flame trap in the drain.
Flame trap in the drain, which was just shy of a quarter million dollars. So all of these buildings that we're having, we are putting tons of money in every year, and we still have 100-year-old buildings. And I, I understand that we have to abide by the taxpayers, but are we in the big scheme of things, abiding by the taxpayers, by nickel and diming all of our buildings, when we could set a new building, which we would be using for joint space, joint lockers, joint storage bays, you know, to be able to do everything that meets current code without continually putting more money into our old buildings? I actually had Saturday wrote a ridiculously long thought about this, and that was, that's, that's the issue that the county's having, that's the issue that the city's having. Yeah, no, I, I did it on the computer. But, but that, that's the same issue that the county is having. I mean, their, their jail, by state mandate, does not meet the current codes. We are not meeting the current codes with our fire and our ambulance buildings, so this is the time for us to make a decision. Are we going to keep nickel and diming every single thing that we have to fix, and then in five years, do it again, because it's still a concrete building? Or are we going to look at a building that meets current standards, that we're going to be good for 20, 30 years? I know that that's what the, that's what's important to me in this conversation. It's about looking at what's best for the community in the future, and I'm the last person that wants to spend any money. I, I know that people would not believe that, but I don't want to spend undue money, but I also want to make sure that if we are spending money, we're spending it the correct way. So, Chief.
My comment is going to be brief.
Then come up, because it has to be recorded. If you would have just told me it was $103,000, you would have been fine.
I think, uh, my fear and the fear of the police chief is, I think we're watching what the county is going through, being forced to make changes, whether it's advantageous or fiscally available now or not, those changes need to be made. We don't want to get backed into the same corner. We want to be ahead of this curve, we want to do it on our terms, and we want to do it properly. I can cite, and I'm not going to, I can give you a lot of reasons why our fire station could potentially be in the same problem or areas as the jail is right now. We have not had that notification or whatever you want to call it.
Mandate.
Mandate to make those changes, but I, I do fear that is coming down the pipe. So I can, again, cite those on, at a different time, but I think there's an opportunity for the city to make meaningful changes on our terms versus being backed into a corner. I feel bad for the county, being in the position they're in. I have my opinions on that too, nothing against the county, just at a state level, I mean, that's a, that's a terrible place to be, but unfortunately, that's where they're at, and we want to avoid that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Please, Pete?
Just that I wanted to iterate, like, whatever the way this, I will also be on board, whatever way it goes, help the transition and do the best we can. I'd like to make a couple, it might, I, I'm not sure what this statute says, I haven't looked it up, but just because you're responsible for somebody, let's say a prisoner, doesn't mean you can't charge for the cost of that until they go to court and get reprimanded to the county jail. Same with, and it isn't a good theory, yes, that, and I agree, taxpayers have already paid for a lot of this, and this is not me, but I'm just saying, what could be gone? Now, I don't think I'll go give them some price ideas, but probably not, you know, I'm just telling you, this may come.
Yeah.
You know, that's all, I just wanted, but.
And that would be on you, I mean, at a certain.
And that's our job, that's not your worry, that's our worry.
My belief is just the information I gave you. I don't believe we would be responsible, but again.
I think you've already done more in a chief's position, going real estate hunting, than I would expect, so thank you.
Officer Buller?
I guess I, I think I'd be with you on one of your opening statements, is if we send this letter to them to open it up for conversation, they requested that we, that we do respond by tomorrow, and I think we should take our, take it seriously and respond by tomorrow, but then also.
Be open to conversation.
Be open for conversation, then after that, then, and that's, that's a place to start anyway, right now with them. That'd be, that'd be my recommendation. I'd like to see it, the letter go, and then, because we promised them we'd have it, we've got it, response, then let's talk about it later.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to see for sure, that we're not going to incur inmate cost and dispatch cost, because.
And again, that would be something, I, I can't, what I can attest to is that what the statute states, what the city attorney's opinion is, and what 10 other comparably-sized communities have already done. And that's the precedence I can cite.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's, it's definitely a bargaining tool that the city would have, that.
That is, that is, that's our level.
Yeah, and that would be what I can, and I can give you, I can research more information on that and give it to you guys, but.
No, that's fine. I just, those are my concerns. That, that was what was raised from the call that I got.
Yeah.
Or three, from the county commissioners.
Or four, or five.
Five. Was they're going to charge us for all that stuff, about 75, 80 grand a year.
And I think you would have a good arguing base.
So I mean, if that is the case, that puts us right back to $9,000 a month, had no cost savings, so, and that's the cost of identity. And how do you tell our taxpayers that this is what we're doing, now we're going to double bill you?
Right, right, well, and, and to be fair, again, if we're talking about making a move to the Baccus building, I believe it was $6,000 something, it came out to just about what we're paying now, and that was part of the recommendation. I, I too, believe it or not, watch our budget very closely. You probably tell by the annual report where I listed all the savings that we had, even to a few hundred dollars. I mean, I realize this is the taxpayers' money. But again, I, I don't think my view on this came out of just strictly finance, that brought about the conversation, but like you said, the identity of us too, and, and a lot of these forward-thinking notions that I think are important to our department.
Yeah, I agree with that. No argument here. I just want to be sure that we're not going to.
And the only one that knows for sure is the other parties.
Exactly. That's exactly right. That's why we need to talk to a place.
Yep. So we've had, anyone else have any discussion? If not, I will, um, Chair would entertain a motion to send the letter that was in your packet to Koochin County.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any further discussion? After tonight, we're going to have a lot of conversation. This is going to be in the community. It's not that at any point this wasn't transparent. It's, you know, been posted, we've been having the conversations at Committee of the Holes, we've met with the county at their meetings, it's been a long time coming. But it's going to be in the community tomorrow. And I just, I, one of the things that Counselor Taylor had said last week is, any way that we move this, we're moving it as, as a team or something in that regards. We're all standing, this is a city council decision. If this passes tonight on a 3-2 vote, and I were to vote against it, it's my job as the mayor to stand up and say, this is the decision of the city council. It's also the decision of our police chief and the men that back him. It's also a decision of our city administrator and the rest of our administrative staff and the rest of our city. So the questions that start coming up, there's going to be a lot. When I first told my wife that this was a conversation, the first thing she said is, what if you have a call and they're all upstairs at Baccus? And I said, well, one of the things that I've been assured is, during the pandemic, our police are patrolling the city and they're dispatched from their cars. So they're already out patrolling, they're going to be there faster than they would have been two years ago. So if my wife has questions about it, I'm very certain that everyone else in the community is going to have questions about it too. If, if you get asked a question and you know the answer, please give them the answer. If you don't have an answer, please redirect them. We, we're doing this for the residents of International Falls. This is a tough, and it's, it's not done, we're still having conversations with the county. That's going to definitely be a piece of this as well. But we're all going at this as a united front, and I'm, I stand behind our police chief, our, our police officers. My biggest concern in all of this is, I want to make sure that they understand that this is about them. This is the hardest thing I've done as mayor. This is going to be a tough deal, and I'm fairly certain that my next three months are going to be pretty crappy, from people that, that don't understand how the decision was made. It's a tough one, and I'm going to be standing by the police chief and all of our guys and the city council, so please, if you have anyone ask you questions, answer them or, or send them my way, because I will be more than willing to answer the questions and the, the heat of a very good decision, so.
Should we just eliminate some phone calls and just give them your number right away?
Yeah. Trust me, it was a holiday yesterday, you're welcome. And I answered it like you would, not like Pete would do on a normal basis, so.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to send the letter. There will be additional conversation between myself and the Chair of the County Board, Jason Choblam, and the city administrator, and we will be setting up some conversation between them moving forward. I'll call the question.
No. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes as well. The motion carries four for the motion, one against the motion, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Go to the reports of the administrator, the attorney, and the department heads. City Administrator?
Mayor, Council, I have nothing additional this evening, thank you.
Okay. Uh, city attorney?
I do have some stuff. A couple of them will require council action, but I'll start going through them. So the first is the property at 1021 Ninth Street, that was burnt back in October of last year. We got a signed agreement from the property owners, allowing us to tear it down and assess the costs back on taxes. The personal property was cleared out of the home today, I don't know if they finished, they may not have finished, but Jared Baldwin did get two quotes for tearing the property down, and does, wanted me to address as an emergency hazardous house teardown, to see about approval on it. So the two quotes were, the first was from Travis Thompson, and including demolition, hauling the demo, and fill of the basement. His quote was 12,700. The second quote was from Steve Boyham, same services, his quote was $14,540. This property has been not only an eyesore, but a true hazard. Since October, with having it cleared out, he did ask that I come forward and request some action from the council on, first, that we can go ahead and tear this down, and if you want one of the two quotes, or to see if the city wants to use its own to tear it down, which kind of leads into my second one, but I'll stop there for now.
Okay. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to tear down 1021 Ninth Street with, which was burned with an emergency teardown. We have two quotes, one. We have two quotes, one is for $12,700, and the other one is for $14,540. Chair would entertain a motion to tear that down?
I'll make the motion that we do the emergency teardown and use a low code.
For Travis Thompson of $12,700. We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0, first one passes.
Okay, so, the second one's a little more long-winded. Jared did give me a report of all of the different properties that need some sort of demolition work, and basically, what it amounted to was there are six properties that went back for county tax forfeiture, and then there's four in the city, one of them includes the 1021 Ninth Street, so three after that, and then there's another one that was actually already approved in 2022 that's coming down, was approved to come down spring of this year, so technically, two new city ones that need to come down. So, I reached out to Nathan Hybel with the county, particularly about the tax forfeited properties, and he said, in the past, basically, what he's done is he brings a board motion in front of the county board, usually end of April, beginning of May, to see about getting those properties torn down. And the way the cost of it is kind of split is the county will pay to have all of the personal property removed, and then the city would actually tear the building down. Because it's tax forfeited, that cost couldn't immediately be assessed against the property, though. All of the demolition waste, I guess, would go to the dump, and the county would waive the cost of getting rid of the demolition property. So, essentially, the only thing on the city is the actual teardown. And then he brought up that the city does receive about $24,000 a year for tax forfeited properties that need to be torn down, and if the property does go for sale, the city gets 20% of the net proceeds of the sale as well to help kind of cover that, and if it's sold, the city can technically reassess expenses against it if it needs to. I know that sounds like a really complicated process, but basically, what he asked me for was some direction from the city council, whether there's interest in continuing in that respect, or if we need to figure out a whole new plan on how the city and county work together to get these buildings torn down, that I don't necessarily need a motion or anything on, just some guidance. And then, for the, for all of these properties, whether the city is going to lean towards having the Public Works Department tear these properties down, or if we're going to continue to want to request quotes or bids.
Your honor? Your honor, honorable mayor, your honorable mayor, honorable mayor.
I think before we move on to any of this, we need to have a discussion with the Public Works Director, how we all go.
I felt the same way.
That would be my same comment, that we need to have Public Works, either go through the Public Works Committee Director or wherever, but I think-
I would, I would be very comfortable sending this to Public Works, to you two, and having the conversation. City attorney, the Public Works Committee is going to take a look and then get a recommendation on how they want to proceed with those, because it's ultimately going to be staff time and figure it out, and we're too early to probably have to worry about that right now.
No, it's not immediate, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention, so it's not like, you know, the end of April and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do. When is the Public Works meeting, and I can go as well to kind of-
Second Monday at 2:00.
Second Monday at 2:00.
Yes.
Okay.
About time we bring something to the table, not just Ted all the time.
Don't tell Ted.
He writes the agenda.
Other business.
All right. Chelsea, do you have anything else to add?
Um, I don't think so. City administrator, am I missing anything?
Not to my knowledge, those were the two items that we had spoke about earlier.
Okay, then no.
Okay, all right, thank you. Department heads, anybody have anything to bring forward? All right.
You don't have any news to report on, Mike?
Uh, no. Okay.
All right, in your report, you have the Fire Rescue EMS Monthly Report from January, you have the Police Monthly Report for January, report of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anybody, anybody, anybody? All right, I have two things, the airport is meeting, Airport Commission is meeting tomorrow, with having Commissioner Hell and Commissioner Ricky Roach both continuing training for their position, they will not be there, so it is just myself, Counselor Buller, and Brian Briggs representing the Airport Commission tomorrow. We had a conversation last, or last week at the Committee of the Whole Meeting about having a conversation about the state of the city, and with what's going on with the police department, I truly believe now is a really good time to have that and get that discussion out into the community. I have spoke with the city administrator and Michaela, and we are going to do that on March 8th. It is going to be pre-recorded, we are going to make sure that it is out on all social media, it is out to the, the radio station, to the newspaper, to KCTV, along with our social medias, to get that information out. We want to make sure that the information is accurate, we want to make sure that the information is, is the, the position of the city and what we're doing, because we are doing some really good things right now. So, we are going to have it pre-recorded, there will be some more information coming at our next city council meeting, but it will be on, on March 8th at 6:00 PM, so.
One thing actually I see in this, I am also now on the board of Cootaska, just so everybody knows that-
Since you've retired, you've gotten on like dang near every board in town.
I know, I filled all the application for one today, I think that's enough, I don't, I think we'll just save this, we'll wait them to come to me this-
You can thank me for that, they asked me to do it, and I said, talk to Pete.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, well, they caught me at a good time too, 7:00 on Thursday.
And, and the last thing that I want to say, and this is going to be really short, I love the civility of our city council and working with our department heads, we've went through some tough stuff already, we have more tough stuff in the future, and we don't always have to agree, we just all have to understand that everyone's position on this board is about trying to bring us to a better community in the future, and as long as we all move forward with that as, as our guiding post, we're going to do just great. Go to audience, do we have anyone in the audience that wants to bring anything forward? Hearing none. Correspondence, we have the International Falls Public Library Board of Trustees on meeting information on February 8th, the International Falls Sump Pump Inspection Report submitted by Bolton and Mink.
Rivadine.
It really was, not, not like some of those sewer videos.
Yeah.
And the Coochettin County Draft Board of Commissioner Minutes. Our next regular city council meeting is going to be Monday, March 6, 2023, at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.